I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Sizmar?
Here.
Mr. Hong? Mrs. Lax?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Seeler? Mr. Simmons? Mr. Winston?
Here.
President Becker?
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education office and written notice is also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcasts. It is the policy of the Board that videotape meetings are not edited for any purposes. Good evening. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing of the fiscal year 2020's school district budget.
Good evening, members of the Board. Good evening to our attendees this evening. This is a summary of the 2019-2020 School District Budget, and I'd like to begin with district facts. So, one of the things that we like to talk about and remind our community is that the district also is a business. First off, we are the 28th-largest school district in New Jersey. That's as of Department of Education data for fiscal year 2018. We are the largest employer in East Brunswick. In terms of a population, we have the equivalent of -- equivalent number of students and staff in our district as some towns that are nearby. Milltown, for example, these are 2017 stats that are currently available online. Milltown, for example, 7,162 is our total population. Spotswood, 8,456. East Brunswick, 8,378 students. That's as of October, the official ASSA count, and that is not including approximately 1,500 staff. South River is at 16,000-plus, and the overall township of East Brunswick is at 48,000 residents. We operate a major transit system. We run approximately 570 routes for approximately 6.75 million miles, and if you take that on a daily basis and just count each traveler every day throughout the year, we transport approximately 2.3 million passengers. This is the equivalent of 271 trips around the Earth, 28 one-way trips to the moon, and one-fifth of the distance to Mars. As a major food service provider, this is based on annual meals served. East Brunswick serves lunches, and this is data as of June 30 of 2018, over 180 serving days. If you look at the comparisons where East Brunswick services are for lunches and à-la- carte meals in comparison to a number of well-known restaurants and the national averages, and those restaurants and averages are based on a full year of serving, 365 days or so. In terms of facilities, our buildings, we have 1.4 million square feet of space, which is more than the U.S. Capitol, Brunswick Square Mall, something a little closer to the home, and a little bit less than the Freehold Raceway Mall. And in terms of land, we have 274 acres of property in comparison to some other nearby facilities, Sixth Flag Great Adventure, Helmutta, Borough, and Disney's Animal Kingdom in Florida. We participate in a variety of shared services, and one of our focuses is to control costs because the priority for us is to ensure that we put as many dollars as possible to support the classrooms, support instruction, support what our students need. So, we do so through an energy conservation program, through cooperative purchasing with other districts, in-house transportation services and multi-tiered busing. We utilize the educational services of New Jersey for purchasing and special programs and transportation services. We cooperate with the township on shared services agreements and other services. We work with the County of Middlesex, and also through refinancing of debt and looking for opportunities wherever they may exist to refinance debt at better rates to be able to reduce our obligations and be able to return dollars into the classrooms. The district also produces revenue, and I'm not sure that everyone in the community recognizes this, but we produce revenue through various programs, through our community programs operations, with the early morning program and the after-school program for the elementary schools, Encore at Churchill and the high school, our learning academy, which is available in our pre-elementary grades, SAT and PSAT and ACT preparation. We offer enrichment programs at the elementary level, and we offer programs such as for fun and fitness at Elementary and Hammershold. And we also generate revenue through rental of our performing arts center at Hammershold. One of the things that is often talked about, and certainly through presentations during the course of the year, and that is the various accomplishments of our students and our staff. One of the accomplishments I do want to note is a quotation from a report that came from the Middle States Association of Colleges and Schools during their accreditation review of the high school, and that is, "East Brunswick High School is without a doubt one of the finest schools in the nation. It is a school that has a very strong academic program, supported by ample financial services and guided by excellent leadership." From a financial management perspective, the district also strives for excellence in that area and has been recognized by the Association of School Business Officials International and the Government Financial Officers Association in its financial reporting, six consecutive years and three consecutive years respectively. Our most recent report from Moody's Investor Service, which was from May of last year, noted several highlights for the district. First, in terms of their overview, that East Brunswick Public Schools has a very good credit position, and its AA2 rating is a little stronger than the U.S. school district's median of AA3. In terms of debt, the net direct debt to full value of 1.3% is roughly equivalent to the U.S. median, and in terms of finances, the financial position of the district is healthy and is aligned with the assigned reading of AA2. Now, this may not sound very exciting, but in terms of, from a financial perspective, reports that are made by the financial sector don't ever come out saying, "It is extremely wonderful. It is the best of the best." They're very even, very, almost nondescript, but these are very good reports. So, some budget facts. I think one of the first things that is important to note, and this is taken from the New Jersey Department of Education's calendar of dates when various actions are to be taken, and this relates to the time between the public hearing and the adoption of the final budget. Now, those dates are statutory. There's no wiggle room in terms of making changes on those. The deadline dates are absolute. And there is additional time for the Board to be able to adopt a budget after the public hearing, and that will happen later this week. But the gap does not give the Board statutory authority to make changes to the advertised budget, which were not specifically discussed in detail at the public hearing. Any revenue and appropriation changes that were not discussed specifically and in detail at the public hearing shall not be included in the adopted budget. So, why is this important? The Board adopted a tentative budget, and it was with great difficulty in arriving at that budget. We have experienced a shortfall, if you will, and I'll review some of those items. And there has been a variety of revisions that have taken place since that tentative budget that we're going to discuss and explain what they are, and they're also reflected in the documents that are available to the public and to the Board. So, what are the factors impacting the bottom line? First of all, revenue. We have limited enhancement opportunities to be able to find new sources of revenue. We've done so much as it is through our community programs, through our facilities, where there really aren't other options available. There may be some, but not going to generate significant amounts of money. There are significant revenues to offset the budget already that come from these sources, community programs, facility rentals, for example, that without those, we would be looking at a significant structural deficit in the budget. In terms of expenditures, our focus is continuation of high-quality general and special education services. That's why we are here, and that's what we need to continue to do. There's also an impact that comes from collective bargaining, an impact on health benefits, and we've been innovative in doing some things over the years to change how we structure our benefit packages, not in terms of the benefits to staff, but also in terms of how we manage those plans. So, for example, in the last year, when we developed our budget, we went into a new plan, a self-funded plan, which reduced the health benefit costs by 5%, unprecedented. We've always seen health benefits rise. The costs have always gone up, 5%, 6%, 7%, 8%. Much better than many other districts and municipalities experience throughout the state, but still there have always been increases. This past year, with the new plan that we implemented ourselves, which was transparent to the staff, we were able to reduce those costs by 5%. We're now seeing a 5% increase for next year. That's driven by claims experience. So, as plans are utilized, the costs go up. And mandated charter school payments, and you'll see in a few moments what those look like, and admittedly, for next year, the charter school payments are going down a little bit, but that, we are having to earmark millions of dollars for the charter school, and I would venture to say that anyone in this room would probably opine that we don't need a charter school, that the services we provide in the district are second to none. So, let's talk about state aid. There's a history of state aid going back to 2008, 2009. At that point in time, our state aid was $20 million. We experienced two cuts, one in 2009-10, and then 2010-11, which reduced our state aid by approximately $6.2 million. A huge hit on the district, and we had some significant impacts on staff and program at that time. Over the years, we've seen no increase or minimal increases in state aid, up until 2019-20. For the next year's budget, we're back to just slightly above where we were 11 years ago, just slightly above. Now, while we're seeing an increase in state aid of approximately $1.5 million, there are offsets. I can point to immediately the fact that in terms of staffing and our salary increases, our salary increases will take $1.4 million of that increase. Mandated charter school payments. Again, this is an issue for us in that it redirects significant resources from our own programs and services to charter school. We allocate $2.9 million for charter school payments. That's for next year, slightly less than the current year at $3.1 million. Nevertheless, a significant amount of money. So, now let's talk about the significant factors impacting the bottom line, and there are four items. Workers' compensation claims, the enrollment growth that we've experienced in grades K to 5, and we've been talking about these for months, going back to, if I recall, November and December. The class size support that has had to be added to the elementary level because of the extraordinary class sizes, and the special education programs and services and the support for those programs. Workers' compensation claims. The high cost of claims results in adverse claims experience. So, we have had some very good years. We were one of the best in the state in terms of our ratings a few years ago, but that has changed. We've had some very significant workers' compensation claims that has put the district in an adverse position in terms of its rating, and that results in higher premium costs. If we look up at the screen, for fiscal 2018, our expenditures were $542,000. Our budget for 2019 was $598,000. But looking forward to 2020, our workers' compensation budget is $930,000, a 55.5% increase. There's no wiggle room on this. It has to be paid, no choices. And we will be seeing this for the next several years until claims, hopefully, we don't have any new significant claims that resulted in this situation.
Bernie, a question about this. So, when you talk about ratings and claims and payments, this isn't what we budgeted to pay people for workers' comp claims. This is what we have to pay for our policy, for our insurance. So, it's dictated by our carrier?
Yes.
So...
And we are part of a consortium, so the experience is a shared experience, but in the meetings I've had with our insurance folks, there are a handful of very significant claims that have directly affected East Brunswick.
So, they can charge us more?
And they must.
Okay, so, for workers' comp coverage, it's going to cost us $332,000 more next year?
Yes. Yes. And it's driven, it is driven by the salaries. So, whatever the cost of our salaries are in what is termed professional, they term it in two ways, professional and non-professional. So, professional essentially is virtually everyone that has lower risk factors of injury in the environment. The higher risk factors are bus drivers, our maintenance employees, our security officers. Those have higher risks of injury, but it is all formula-driven. So, next, our enrollment. So, K-5 enrollment, we've talked about this a number of times over the last four or five months, and I think it's very important to keep this in mind. So, we started in the current year's budget with our projection of 3,379 students in K to 5. We've always done straight-line projections. They've always been relatively close. It's not an exact science, but we have seen some significant anomalies this year. When we go, when we started in September 2018, our enrollment was 3,535 students, and we have seen a consistent increase from month to month in our student population at the elementary level. Up through yesterday, we're, we are now at 3,664 students, and that's an increase of 285 students since March of last year, and that number of students is larger than Balm Monroe's total elementary enrollment. So, we have essentially grown by a small elementary school, K to 5. So, the impact upon the budget. So, as a result of the unanticipated elementary enrollment, we have had large class sizes, and to mitigate the large class sizes, we have had to add staff during the course of the year to help support students and the teacher in the classrooms. So, what does that look like in dollars? We started out this fiscal year with a budget of $198,000 for those supports, not having anticipated, and there was no way to anticipate the kind of growth that we've seen. As I said earlier, it's a complete anomaly. So, as a result, we've had to add staff this year, unbudgeted staff, and that has resulted in an increase in that area of $181,000 in this year, a 91.8% increase in that staffing. And that staffing is not going away because we're not going to be able to address all of the class size issues for next year. We don't have the room, so we must retain these staff. And so, for next year, the overall impact on the budget is almost $200,000. Because our starting point was $198 for this year, we're going into next year at $389,000. It's a 191, almost $200,000 impact on the bottom line. So, I think I want to go back for a moment now and just mention or remind everyone, a few slides back when I talked about state aid. State aid is going up about $1.5 million. $1.4 million roughly of that is going directly to salary increases for next year. So, that leaves us $100,000. So, let's go on. Special education programs and support. We're legally required to provide special needs programs and the services, and when the resources don't exist in the appropriate areas, we have to reallocate funds or find a way, institute a budget freeze, stop purchasing in various areas, but we must provide the financial resources to support the legal obligation that's right for the students. So, what have we experienced? For 2018, our year-end expenses, and this is strictly staffing, year-end expenses $13.9 million. When we crafted our budget for the current year, it was at $14.3 million, based on the staffing that we had in place at that time. It was a 2.8% increase, pretty much in the ballpark, $393,000. During the course of this year, as we were crafting our budget for next year, we highlighted the fact that our special education services has gone up significantly. $14.8 million is our current year's revised budget, almost a half-million dollars more than what was budgeted. So, going into next year, rolling forward, the staffing, that's a $15.5 million budget or almost a $1.2 million increase from where we started in the current year. We had $100,000 that was left from state aid, not enough to cover those few things that I've just noted. So, here's the summary. Workers' comp, class size support, and special needs programs and support, $1.7 million. Our tax levy growth is $2.2, almost $2.3 million, leaving $586,000 for other increases. So, now, take this 586 plus the $100,000 that was left from the state aid increase, that leaves us $686,000 roughly to address increased costs in every other area. I already mentioned health benefits is going up 5%. That will eat a chunk of that. And then there are transportation costs and other service costs throughout the district, and we still have to advance program. We must support and improve our instructional programs and co-curricular and athletic activities. We must support and improve. We have to continue to provide services through our Flex program, supporting the very at-risk students in that area. We must provide our ongoing investment in technology. The district cannot stop. It cannot get put into a holding pattern. We must move forward.
I have a question for you on the last slide. Under the workers' compensation claims, you have a 332. To President Becker's question before, the increase that you've shown were premium-specific that was causing the increase on the comp side. These are claims. How do these claims compare year over year? Are we seeing an increase in comp claims?
We've had very significant, I'd say about a handful of very, very significant claims. I'm talking about in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Usually, claims don't run into that kind of money, and I don't have the details with me this evening, but they are, and that would be a confidential conversation to be had to get into some of the details, but extremely high.
Just in terms of the increase as an aggregate?
This is an anomaly as well, but we're going to be faced with having to address this over the next several years because it just doesn't go away, because there are continued claims that will, that need to trail out over a period of time. It's not a once and done. We have staff members who are continuing to have treatment, staff members that may have required major surgeries, staff members that may have lost utilization, full utilization of some part of their body, and so those all have significant impacts on the workers' compensation costs.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, getting back to the slide, we talked about the technology investment. We need to continue with facilities improvements. There's not much in terms of facility improvements. We need to replace the roof at Churchill. That roof is in dire need. And again, mitigating the costs across the board, finding whatever we can to try to mitigate costs and find savings that can help in maintaining program and services. So, our estimated budget, revenue and appropriations, they must be in balance. Our budget is at 157... Our budget is at $157.2 million. Again, I underscore the fact that this is the revision, this includes the revisions for final adoption. The general fund tax increase is at 2.2, almost $2.3 million, which is 250,000 below cap. Our debt service fund tax is decreasing, $677,000. That is the mortgage. Those funds are not available for use. It is the mortgage that we have acquired through bond referendum or refinancings. So our net tax increase is $1.6 million. And as a percentage, it's 1.2%. So some of the details. We have teacher additions at the elementary level. Eight full-time teachers are included in the budget to help with class size. This does not address all of the class size issues at the elementary level. In order to accommodate this, accommodate, in order to make this work, we're not accommodating anything. We need to do this. In order to make this work, we have eight classrooms, only eight classrooms, that are utilized by the Early Learning Academy, a revenue generator. We have to take the Early Learning Academies out of the elementary schools and relocate them. There will be a cost to that, but we have to relocate them to make those classrooms available. There are no other classrooms available in the elementary schools. We are at capacity. And if we were to have optimal class sizes, we would need seven more classrooms for next year with seven more teachers. And the next section talks about reductions. In order to have gotten those additional seven teachers, there would have to be additional I'm sorry to say. So the rest of this chart reflects the reductions that must be made. We have reduction in administrator. We have a reduction in teacher and other certificated staff. And then for non-certificated staff, we have additional reductions. All of these were absolutely necessary to balance the budget. We cannot have an out-of-balance budget. Usually when we present a budget, we talk about, well, what are the things that we're doing? And I said earlier, we have to continue. And there are some improvements, but not many. Textbook replacements, as are listed, and some science materials. And we roll over our debt, our short-term debt from year to year to keep things going, to keep us able to make capital improvements, to do other kinds of things that are necessary without having a negative impact on the budget. It's holding a steady line with regard to what our debt is. And so we have two capital improvements on, on tap. And we have various replacements for classrooms and support. The final adoption of the budget will be this Thursday, May 9. And all of the details regarding the revisions will be posted on the district website. Follow the quick link on the left-hand side of the main page and go to user-friendly budget. And that's where the information will be. It has not been updated yet. It will be updated in the next day or two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions before I open it up for the public? Mark?
I have a question. I know you said statutory reductions or changes can only be made in things that were discussed in detail. Would items that were on this PowerPoint be considered discussed in detail in the public's portion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was going to be my question.
Oh, sorry.
No, perfect. Okay.
Any questions from the board?
I, I asked.
Okay.
That was Mark at the Sandy Zagout question. I did it. If it was up there, does that mean we talked about it? Okay, for the good of the cause of the public.
First, it's the public hearing.
First, it's the public hearing, which is the good of the cause for the public, about the public hearing. Okay. So just those who would like to speak on the issue of the fiscal year 2020 school district budget, please come up to the mic. I'm going to just ask you to state your name and address for the record. And if there are any students in the audience, you do not have to give your address.
My name is Lenora Catalano. I live at 6 Ruslin.
Donna Swift, Allentown, New Jersey. We are here to speak on behalf of media specialists in the district and also ourselves at Hammerhill. We are your media specialists at Hammerhill Middle School. We have some statistics to share with you about the role that the media specialists play in the district. And then Lenora's going to speak specifically to Hammerhill. We have 14 media specialists in East Brunswick that serve the 11 schools in the administration building. The number of patrons in the district, including all students and staff, is 13,414 patrons. Each media specialist at that number serves 958 individuals. The media specialists manage a total of 175,482 books and resources. This year alone, we have created over 5,400 research projects with each of our students. District-wide, we teach how to use and process information from 74 individual databases. Media specialists are involved in 32 different clubs, committees, and events, including The Relay for Life, Fairview Science Trip, The Coding Club, Video Newsmakers, School Safety, Crisis Team, Medical Emergency Response Team, Read Across America, One Book One School, School Concerts, EB Tex, SAT and AP Testing, NHS Review Committee, The Curriculum Technology Team, Family Fitness Night, Maker's Day, Run to Reading, Reading All Stars, Mr. Lemoncello in the Library, EB Reads, EB Ed Tech, Tech Tuesday, STEM Club, School Climate Committee, District Affirmative Action Team, and Future Ready Schools, as well as other events. In the Future Ready Schools Initiative, we have a quote that we think speaks to our positions. "And the school librarians lead, teach, and support the future-ready goals of their school and district in a variety of ways through their professional practice, programs, and spaces." And we were integral in that process last year. Keith Curry Lance and Deborah E. Catchell, renowned researchers for over 20 years in the media specialist area, are quoted as saying, "Since 1992, a growing body of research known as the School Library Impact Studies has consistently shown positive correlations between high-quality library programs and student achievement. Data from more than 34 statewide studies, including New Jersey, suggests that students tend to earn better standardized test scores in schools that have strong library programs." In addition, newer studies conducted over the last several years show that strong school libraries are also linked to other important indicators of student success, including graduation rates and mastery of academic standards." They go on to say, "Reading and writing scores tend to be higher for all students who have a full-time certified librarian. And if one, it comes to reading, students in at-risk subgroups tend to benefit, benefit more than all students combined. What may be more surprising is that the presence, presence of a certified school librarian was also a predictor of higher elementary and middle school math scores." It is, we hope that you take this information into consideration as you wrestle with these very, very difficult decisions that you have to make in the next couple of days.
And as your Hammerhill Media Specialists, our combined efforts have allowed us to be the top circulation, circulating media center in the district. We have had a total of 520 classes taught, including orientations, brainstorming, databases, research, learning what's fake news and what's reliable internet sources, books and eBooks, Google Suite, Microsoft Sway, book talks, how to credit the author and citation creation. We have done professional development for our entire staff on Google, Google Suite, how to use the cricket machine, and Microsoft Sway. During and after school, we have helped over 16,816 individual students. And we have also contributed to our school community by having over nine, nine contests in our media center throughout the year to increase our level of literacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else reaching, wanting to speak about the budget? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Tu. I live at 31 North Drive. And I'm one of the media specialists at Churchill Junior High School. I'm here tonight to express my concern over the proposed media specialist, specialist staff reductions presented in the budget. As I understand it, the proposed cuts will eliminate three media specialist positions within the district. In times of budgetary uncertainty, it has become all too common for school districts to reduce their library media programs. Perhaps this is due to people remembering the library from their youth, a quiet place with little activity, where students would occasionally come in with their teacher to check out books. But those people have obviously not set foot inside an East Brunswick Public School Media Center lately. Our media centers have evolved into vital learning spaces full of activity and emerging technology. Our jobs as media specialists have also evolved to keep pace in an increasingly digital world. In this era of fake news and media bias, the role of the media specialist has become more crucial than ever. We oversee critical student resources, providing access to credible sources to support research and student inquiry. As the technology hub of the school, we ensure equitable access to technology for all of our students. While these resources are essential for students, even more important is the direct impact that media specialists have on student learning. We are teachers and collaborators. This year, the Churchill Media Specialist taught 399 classes, most of which were devoted to research. We are proud to be able to say that every student in Churchill receives research instruction from a certified media specialist. Through this instruction, our students develop the skills to effectively search for relevant database articles, locate subtopics in print sources, evaluate online sources for credibility and bias, and properly cite their sources. As partners with classroom teachers who bring their expertise in the content area, media specialists bring their own unique expertise to this partnership. But don't take my word for it. I'd like to share some data with you. This year, students at Churchill have performed 69,373 database searches and 1,494 reliable search engine searches. They have downloaded 222 website evaluation checklists. They've created 1,237 bibliographies using Noodle tools. And that represents just a fraction of the works cited pages created to support the 6,513 turnitin submissions. These numbers provide strong evidence that research is alive and well in East Brunswick. It also authenticates the direct impact that media specialists have on student learning and college readiness. Media specialists wear many hats. In addition to being teachers, we are also technology liaisons and experts in the building. We collaborate with teachers to integrate technology tools into the classroom experience. This year, we've taught 60 digital tools classes to provide students with the skills to communicate their ideas through digital storytelling, to reinforce visual literacy by creating infographics, and to develop curation and collaborative skills using, creating virtual museums. These are just some examples of how media specialists provide new learning opportunities to spark student creativity and innovation. We also lend our tech expertise to support our staff. We present at faculty and department meetings, hosting breakout tech sessions and one-on-one training sessions. In addition to being teachers, collaborators, and tech experts, we are still librarians at heart. We strive to foster a culture where reading is a lifelong pursuit. To get students excited about reading and encourage reluctant readers, we've hosted 48 book talks this year. We take great care to develop a collection that not only represents and appeals to all readers in our diverse community, but also one that supports the emotional and social learning needs of our students. Our students have checked out approximately 5,900 books this year, which comes out to about five books per student.
One minute.
In an era where we are constantly competing for students' time spent on social media and various devices, that's a win for literacy. So I know I've thrown a lot of numbers at you, and I'd like to take a step back for a moment and look at the big picture. I recently met a young couple moving into East Brunswick. When I asked them why they chose East Brunswick, what do you think their response was? Of course, it's for the schools. East Brunswick has a history and reputation for preparing students for college-level research and college readiness. That's what sets us apart from other districts. Our media program is an integral part of that foundation. While I understand that cuts need to be made, please consider this. While other districts may have the short-sighted perception that media centers are becoming irrelevant in a digital age, it is exactly for that reason, because we're living in a digital age, that we need to support our media program. It is only with this type of robust program that our students can emerge as effective and ethical users of information, with the skills to navigate an ever-changing information landscape to become informed and productive citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Cindy Collins, and I live in Biscataway. I've made my career as a library media specialist in East Brunswick for the past 27 years. And I'm proud that I made the decision to join East Brunswick Schools after completing my master's in library science degree because the East Brunswick Board of Education has always valued and supported their media centers. This year, I will be retiring, and I'm dismayed to hear that my position may not be filled by a certified library media specialist. I understand that budgetary decisions must, must be made. But before the Board of Education makes those decisions, I want to make sure you're aware of the role of the library media specialists that we play in our schools. I'm speaking from the perspective of a secondary library media specialist, but the skills we teach are scaffolded upwards from the elementary level. In addition to many duties and responsibilities, I'd like to focus on one particular charge that is at the forefront of our mission. At the secondary level, we routinely teach research and digital literacy skills in collaboration with classroom teachers when students are conducting research. It's hard to believe that when I began my career, which feels like yesterday, computers were just being introduced into schools. And in fact, East Brunswick High School still had the old-fashioned card catalog with paper cards inside drawers. And then came the Internet. Technology has changed the information landscape so quickly that we, as an institution, haven't had a chance to modify curriculum to address new strategies required for the explosion of digital information. And now, when the temptation is to just Google it, it's more important than ever to convince students that online sources need to be evaluated and vetted. When students use and repeat what they find on the Internet, they own it. To give students the skills needed to wisely utilize information is one of the most important functions of a media specialist. In high school alumni questionnaires, our graduates frequently state they felt they were well-prepared to tackle college-level research because of the strength of the East Brunswick curriculum. Many of their college classmates were not as lucky. The funds spent on staffing and purchasing resources over the past years has been well-spent. I was pleased when last month, a Gail database representative brought to my attention that East Brunswick High School ranks number two out of 366 New Jersey schools in Gail database usage. The representative also pointed out the effect of search and keyword strategies which our students implement. That data speaks volumes about our success in teaching these skills. Media specialists are uniquely qualified to provide guidance and answer questions that students and staff have when they enter the high school media center door. My concern is that if the secondary media centers are scaled back to only one media specialist per building, that one person will certainly not be available from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., as we are now. The logistics will mandate that too frequently, patrons will not have their expectations met. And when patrons... And when patrons cannot be certain that their needs will be met, the program will erode. On days when we're open, an average of 477 students come through our doors of their own volition. That's during lunch, before school, during their study hall period, they're coming on their own. They come with a variety of needs for various reasons. The media center is often called the heart of the school. But I like to think of it as the brain of the school. Do you have a question? It's rare that the answer cannot be found in the media center, where a certified media specialist is available all day, every day. In closing, let me tell you about when I sat in my very first library-science class at Rutgers. My professor stated that libraries are the beacons of light and truth. I will never forget that image. In this age that we now live in with fake news and alternative facts, we need to remind ourselves and teach our students that there is truth. And we need to give them the certainty to know where they can go and how to find it. The library-media center is up to that challenge. To supplement my comments, I have some data and information that I'd like to share with you. And thank you so much for listening to my concerns.
Thank you. Thank you for all your years of service.
Good evening, Dana Zimbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association. So I know budgets are the most difficult thing a school board has to present. And I know there is difficult choices, and I respect that, and I do understand that. However, I'm coming to you tonight, united with the EBA Executive Committee here, with some concerns that we have. And these concerns come fresh off of a three-year contract ratification after working nine months under an expired agreement. Several times tonight, we heard Mr. Gilliana speak of the salary increases are part of the issue with the budget. And that's understandable. Public schools are people businesses. That's never going to be avoided. Some of the concerns, specific concerns. We had a ratification vote just last Thursday. And we shared the good news of our contract with our members. And they were happy to know that they would be seeing modest increases in their salaries. And by my count tonight, and I might not be 100% accurate here, but going through the slides, it seems as 11 wonderful dedicated souls of our clerical unit are going to lose their jobs. And they're some of our most vulnerable employees. And the timing could not be worse. Off of this, this same department had major cuts two years ago. I'm also seeing what I believe to be 12 certificated staff positions being cut. Some of them will be through attrition, I understand. And choices are hard to make. But we also need to look at some of those areas as well. Some of these cuts are being made in special education with resources for our special education students, some of our most vulnerable. And also the media specialist, which we know, East Brunswick, anywhere you go in the state of New Jersey, they know East Brunswick students because of their research skills and what they can do. And that is 100% because of our media specialist. Additionally, I see some math positions being cut. And that's an area of recent sensitivity to our community. My, I guess my big, I understand you have to, you only can work within the confines of what you have. I totally understand that. But I'm seeing $250,000 that is still available, and we are below cap, the cap of 2%. East Brunswick received an additional $1 million worth of state aid. And they received that money because the state felt that East Brunswick should be fully funded and they should receive their fair share. Because we've been doing everything correctly. And that's kudos to you, Mr. Gilliana, and your, and your department. So that was money that they believed that we should have and that we should be using. So now, not to fully use that seems a little erratic. I question the logic of that. And just doing a quick Google search, there's about 16,600 residences in East Brunswick. And that $250,000 amounts to a $1.25 a month, or a $15 rebate back to our community. And that seems very small. And when you're not budgeting up to the cap of 2%, I think it creates a litany of other issues. For every dollar you don't put into the budget up to cap, you put us further behind in the future with the concept of compounding over time. This is money we can never get back. And giving back money creates a possible scenario of losing state aid going forward because of the fair share ratio will go down. So in closing, there's some questions that I'm going to leave you to ponder tonight, because these are the ones that I'm pondering. Have you accounted for the adequacy budget going out, say, 2025? Are we gonna get there, going up less than the 2% cap each year? Is the $250,000 of tax relief gonna haunt us in the future? We can't get it back as bank cap when the state increases end. And that's a reality we lived for, for quite some time. So the increases we're seeing, they may stop and they may go backwards again. So is that gonna come back to haunt us for that amount of money? For roughly $15 a house, and again, I know that's not the way it's done, I'm just using straight averages, as tax relief, is this really the wisest decision? Would a $15 increase per house as an investment in our schools today be wiser? What will that $15 look like in two, or five, or 10 years from now? Could this save us 10 years from now with increasing enrollment? Or at least help us with increasing enrollment? If the enrollment keeps going up, and I don't think it's a anomaly, as it has this year, with the exploding new development in East Brunswick as part of the mayor's redevelopment plan, how is this decision going to impact us with the budget going forward? As Helen Keller once said, "The only thing worse than being blind is having sight but no vision." I'm gonna ask you to think about our future, use your vision, and look at the choices that Olbridge, our neighbor, made over the years and the position they are in today. It's not an exact relation, but there is some similarities there. And we, the members of the East Brunswick Education Association, are respectfully requesting another look at this budget and looking at fully utilizing the money that we were given because we were responsible in using it over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak about the budget? Seeing none, I close the public hearing on the budget. And now go to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of providing an opportunity to the public to express themselves. To allow for a fair and orderly public comment period, individual comments are limited to five minutes. Members of the public are reminded this is a public televised meeting to protect the privacy of all students and staff. Concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Are there any members of the public wishing to address the board on a subject other than the budget? Seeing none, I close the public portion. I thank you all for coming tonight. We greatly appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't adjourned yet. Two seconds. You don't wanna miss the ending, it's slam-bang finish. I just wanted to thank you all for coming tonight. Are there any committee reports, information items, or the good of the cause for the board? Lori?
I'm glad you're all here, since it's Staff Appreciation Week. I know not all the schools are celebrating this week, but a lot of them are. And so I just wanted to say thank you. I know sometimes we don't always agree on things. But I hope you never, ever feel unappreciated because as a parent and a board member, you absolutely are. And for my Hammerhill friends, I hope you're enjoying the goodies this week because you know the PTA there definitely loves you.
Anybody else? Okay, we do have a need for a closed session. That's that wind-up ending I was referring to. So can I please have a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting? Those matters are reflected on the agenda this evening. The length of the closed session is estimated to be two hours, after which a public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sizmore. Is there any discretion? All those in favor? Post, abstain? Motion carries. Thank you, good evening.